Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order Monday, January 24th. Special called meeting. If you could stand for the invocation of pledge. Well, we thank you so much for the opportunity to come together and serve this community. We pray that you would guide our steps, help us, give us wisdom in making decisions, and that you would be with all of our first responders, protect them, and keep them safe. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to let you guys know Chairman Paris is under the weather. So he's with us on speakerphone, and he'll be able to follow right along with us at the meeting. So are there any changes to the agenda besides, number one, we have a guest that's not here yet? So we're going to push that one until later time today. As soon as he gets here, we'll take care of that. But any other changes to the agenda?
No.
And I wanted to clarify, Jim, I know we needed to do something that you needed today, correct?
It's on the agenda.
Okay, perfect, just want to clarify. Okay, if there are no other changes, I make a motion that we approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie, please.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Okay, and next we have citizens wishing to speak. Yes, sir. You come to the microphone. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Doug Brink. I reside 1425 along the Mountain Road. Been here, a Gilmer County resident for about five years now. I've come to speak concerning my concern about plans to raise the hospitality tax. I own three short-term rental properties in the Cherry Log and the White Path area. Inflation is killing us in this business. I have fear we may put ourselves at a disadvantage marketing to potential visitors by this. Pulled some notes off of a Facebook page that is set up to help owners hook up with potential guests without going through the VRBO type sites of Airbnb. And comments are prevalent that prices have skyrocketed over the past year because of inflation and increasing real estate values. This woman says, "Is it even possible to rent for a week in March for my family of four for $114,000?" Another comment, my teacher says, "I have to come during peak weeks because the other weeks I'm teaching your kids in school." I used to come three times a year. Now maybe I'm lucky to come once every two years because of the expenses. A comment from an owner says inflation's everywhere because she also owns properties in Florida where their local government won up by 3% on the lodging taxes. And she's imploring some of the guests, "Don't get mad at the host, get mad at the politicians who continue to increase the taxes causing inflation." Many of our guests are older. Our cabins are small. We don't rent to large groups. We have a one-bedroom, one-bath, that is a couples-only cabin. We have two-bedroom, one-bath cabins, the other two. And we rent to either small families or couples. And a lot of our visitors earn fixed incomes. In fact, we even have at least two, maybe three widows who come every year because this is the last place they went on vacation with their spouse before their spouse passed. And they come to just sit on the same porch or nearby porch to where their last visit was, and they visit the same restaurants. And these people express concern because prices are going up. Robert, Pete Visser says, "They've demonstrated with this and from other comments we've received that they notice government is pushing part of the price increases." Last year, $5 per night tax by the state for transportation, some of that earmarked for MARTA. I mean, that really helps us a lot up here, I just don't think it's fair. We spoke out against that to the state with the Dull and Death Years. So, you know, we've already been hit with a fire bill overnight. 3% more if you go all the way is, I just think, you know, it's tough on us. Propane, 30%, 40% more than last year. I bought some firewood two weeks ago, three weeks ago. $125 a face cord from a guy I used to get it for $80 a face cord eight months ago. During the pandemic, we've had a lot of new visitors up here. A lot of people, Charles, that these are boom times for Gilmer tourism because people who used to go on a cruise are coming to Gilmer. People who used to, they plan to go to Europe, but they couldn't go to Europe, so they wanted to come, stay closer to home. And many feel safer not going to a beachside condo where they're around a lot of other people, but in a standalone cabin, they can kind of distance themselves and feel safe. Really, how much longer is this going to last? We're, you know, and our guests are facing inflation, not just from our cabins. I know five years ago, we started out renting from $99 to $125. Not a whole lot. Now, we are one of the lowest that I know of, and our rates are 115 or 145. And at 145, even before we had the cleaning fee, you only get a $26.75 a night for sales tax and hospitality tax and transportation tax. You know, that's an entree at a restaurant, most places. Our guests are being hit on inflation in our restaurants. Used to be if you go to Emily's, you'd get a steak dinner for around $35, if I recall. Last time I was in there, the same steak dinner was priced over 50. So our guests are being squeezed. And as other venues open back up, and as people feel more comfortable returning to the places that they used to vacation, like beachside condos, or taking a cruise, or going back to Europe, I think we're basically, you know, we're going to be overpriced for what we are and for who our traditional clientele is. The people who want a quick getaway from Atlanta, or a three to four break from the summer heat of Florida in the summertime. The county's already seeing increased income from the short-term rental industry and the hospitality industry because of the inflated cabin prices that we rent at, because of the inflated restaurant prices. The county's seeing, you know, more money. And I understand that the county is pinched financially and it's hard, but a large number, this might be my anecdotal observation, that a majority of our short-term rentals are located in the north part of the county. And ironically, it's a part of the county that seems to be often short-changed on county services. The convenience center at White Path Road is open three days a week instead of five or six. The fire station, Station 11, has been closed a good number of days over the past few months because of short staffing with Gilmer County Fire Department. I've communicated with Commissioner Paris about this, and I understand why that is. You know, you're having the same trouble finding people to work here as the restaurants and the hospitality industry and the poultry processors are. But we're being taxed very heavily in the areas that are heavy with short-term rentals, but increased property taxes because property values have increased. I've had property taxes look significant on my cabins. And you're getting more money because our rental rates are up because of our other increased prices. So, you know, I think you're seeing more of a benefit. I just think this is a wrong time to make an inflationary move of raising our costs by another 3% on top of all the other economic forces out there. One more thought about the lack of county services on the north end of the county. I'm an old news reporter way back in the day. I still have a little police scanner I turn off from time to time. I hear about falling screens and storms and that sort of thing. It kind of saves the want of doubt. The other night I had one on, it's been a couple of weeks, I guess. There was a medical call out on Rock Creek Road. Sounded like it was pretty far out. The nearest available ambulance, medical unit, was Station 4C on Tails Creek Road. That's a long way to go for an ankle and skull, but seconds count. Imagine it was probably one of those nights when Station 11 was not staffed. So if you're going to raise the taxes, if you're going to try to find new ways to taxes, at least give us the kind of county services that are life-saving and needed in an emergency. Remember that, you know, I say this in all respect. So help us out in this inflationary time. Let's make Gilmer a long-term vacation destination. Let's not scare people off by giving them a $30, $40, $50 or more tax bill on top of everything else they've got prepared here. They're all ready to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. R.I.M.K.
Good morning. My handouts.
Morning, Charlie.
He's down there.
Oh, he's there.
Good morning.
I'll give one to Jim. My name's Robert Ferguson, longtime resident of L.J., big fan of Gilmer County. The reason I'm up here is to talk about a project that I was involved in through Leadership Gilmer and the Gilmer Chamber recently. Chairman Paris was in my class that just graduated, took a little while longer because of COVID. But in Leadership Gilmer, one of the things that you do is you find a project that you want to be involved in. And so the project that I was involved in with a great group of people was to study signage in our county and our cities. And it's something that I've kind of, when we were in St. Act of L.J., visiting different towns, it's something that I noticed that some towns had and that we lacked. So where we started was, what do we want? And what do we want our signage in our town to help with? What you have, everybody is familiar with the handouts, but the second page is what our signs look like currently, which is kind of confusing. There's a lot of real estate signs around town, and there's just no cohesiveness to visitors and residents finding things. And one of the main places that we looked at was Delonica and how they have cohesive and consistent signage in their county and in their city to help people find vineyards and businesses and downtown. And so through the signage committee, we gathered information. We had some great meetings with people throughout the state who spearheaded programs in Delonica and Augusta and Macon and other cities, and we gathered information from them. And we went around town and looked at what we have and what we don't have, and that is consistency. And so we formed a project. We put together a presentation, a PowerPoint, which I'm not going to show you today. That's just a couple of examples of printouts. Charlie, Chairman Paris has seen that presentation. And this is just the beginning talk of this initiative. And there's going to be a lot of people involved. That's why I gave Jim the printout. We would have the DOT involved. We would have the county, cities of L.J., East L.J., businesses. One of the main things we didn't want is for this to be a pay-to-play thing, so you wouldn't pay to have your signs on here. We would figure out where these signs would go. 515 coming into the county, around the city. You know, there could be a downtown kiosk that we would work with the city of L.J. and the city of East L.J. So we're just getting the conversation going. I did do a presentation with the L.J.'s DDA, and they were very excited about this idea. One of the things that we would do is get a third-party company to help us design, and people who have already gone through this process in the state. So what I wanted to do was just come here to represent a project that could benefit from the hotel motel tax raising to 8%. When I first started this project, what we all thought was, well, we could get some private funding, we could maybe get a grant, and maybe the chamber could help us pay for the signage. Well, what we found out was the chamber could not do that presently at the percentage that we're at. But if it was raised to 8%, then part of that 1% could help us to go ahead with this initiative, get more people involved, pay for a company that would help us to design the signage, help us, that would be consistent with Gilmer County, maybe the colors of the chamber and things like that. And so when people visit here, or even people who live here, when they're driving around, they may not need their phones. If you drive to Delonica and you're looking for one of the vineyards or the downtown area, you see these signs that are consistent. You don't see the real estate signs everywhere that are just ugly that we have on our roads and highways because people don't have the signage to help people get to their places. And we just thought it would be a great thing to start talking about. And this is a project that could benefit from the hotel motel tax along with grants and along with maybe some private funding. That would have to all be a discussion that we would have. And so I wanted to give you those handouts to just show you kind of what this signage committee put together through Leadership Gilmer. And we would like to see it talked about more. I'm probably going to be talking to the city of L.J. in one of their city council meetings and possibly East L.J. But it's something that I've been looking at for a long, long time, and Leadership Gilmer just helped us to bring some more people and some more knowledge together. So I wanted to come and talk to you guys about that. And if you have any questions, I would love at some point to show you the PowerPoint presentation that we put together, but today wasn't the right time to do that. So, any questions? Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other citizens wishing to speak? Okay, we'll go on to unfinished business, which is discussion of possible action of hotel motel taxes or the motel tax. So David, you gave us... Got too many things going on here.
I gave you three different sets of documents.
Yes.
One is the code section.
Does Charlie have these?
I emailed them to him shortly before the meeting. Did you receive them, Charlie? And have you, do you have them available?
Charlie, did you hear that? Do you have the, David sent you an email this morning with some documents for this?
I emailed them.
Okay. Give you a second. Or if you want to go ahead and talk, you can probably hear you, just talk about them. And if I'm clear on this, David, this, if we were to decide to move this to the general session, this is, we can decide to make that move with that whatever amount and then not vote on it till later. It doesn't go into play until we vote on it, or do we need to?
There's a couple of things that need to occur. Charlie, have you been able to locate that email yet?
Yes, I'm looking at it.
Okay. And at any point, Charlie, you're unable to hear me or either Hubert or Carlene, just let us know quickly, and we'll back up and restate whatever was being stated.
Okay, actually, I made a video up pretty well.
Okay, good. I spoke with Jackson Lilly with respect to this, and the initial steps would be that the board would have to consider how it would allocate the expenditures for the tourism, the TPT project. And from there, after the adoption of the resolution, then that would be submitted to Speaker Ralston for introduction as a local bill to the legislature. I believe, now, maybe if there's for some reason a date that is continued in the session for weather or any other matters, but I believe that these will have, that this will have to be submitted to him. I believe by February the 16th, I believe, is the date, is the date that needs to be submitted. So you're on a timeline. It can be attached after that, it's just as much more difficult, and it's not worth playing the risk to do that. So if the board is interested in considering this increase in lodging tax, it could go from, it could go to 6, up to the full 8%. The handouts will address that. One of the things I do want to alert you to is the handouts are using the 2019 revenue figures. Those numbers are going to be considerably different since the introduction of the bill last year by the Georgia Legislature, which allowed or required VRBOs and Airbnbs to pay the hotel motel lodging tax. Sandy, if she were here, probably could give us the best estimate on a monthly basis as to what the current collection is, and then you could get ideas to what the additional 3% increase would result in. Of that 3% increase, you can see there's a single flyer, and Charlie, it's captioned This was what Jackson has shared with me, and you can see that there's three particular funnels there. The first funnel being 37.5%, which is non-restricted, and it specifically addresses what it can be used for, and those proceeds can be used for any legal general fund purpose in the city, county, or consolidated government. The next funnel is for 43.75%, and that is with the 501(c)(3) Chamber, which is a nonprofit corporation, and those funds would be restricted, and that's for the tourism development. And then it says at least 43.75%. So you could actually negotiate even a higher rate, but at least at a minimum, 43.75%. That leaves of that remaining percentage, 18.75%, and that is for a tourism product development. Now, there is an additional handout that I did give you, and it's kind of just a black and white, and on the second page of that, that's in the code section. We'll wait for everybody to catch up with me. That's not it right there, Carlene?
Not that document?
No, it's this one underneath here. Right here.
All right, okay.
And you can see that that one talks about the definitions. If you look at the top, it says 48-13-50.2 definition. Charlie, were you able to locate that one?
Yes, I got it.
Okay. On the second page of that document, you'll see that there is the definition of tourism product development, and it specifically identifies those categories upon which those funds can be expended. Now, it's a laundered list of probably about, looks like maybe 16, somewhere in that neighborhood, a number of items, but a good many of which would not apply to Gilmer County because, again, there are no racing facilities here, including drag strips, motorcycle racetracks, and auto or stock car racetracks or speedways. So the board would have to look at these tourism-based tourism product development categories and look to see what would be specifically available for the expenditure in Gilmer County, and then from there would have to identify and decide what they would wish to do with their, with the funds. Now, again, that means that you're going to have to look at each and every one of those subcategories, but again, most of them will not apply. Y'all have any questions so far with respect to any of these?
We make that decision annually, right?
Yes, that would be what would be advised to do, is to make that decision annually with the creation of a budget.
It appears to be rather broad.
It is.
And I do see many, David, that we could use. So parks, trails, I mean, I see about half would be relevant.
Yeah, you're just going to need to identify what would be available or applicable for Gilmer County and the expenditures, and then you just need to identify that in that initial resolution, how you wish to perceive. And then I think annually, as with the development of the budget, you'd want to just adopt a subsequent resolution on how you'd spend or allocate it.
David, I don't know if we're carrying weight finding, Sandy?
Yes, sir.
That would be essentially, Sandy and Robert were just discussing with me.
Yeah, I believe it would be. I'd like to see what the definition of weight finding is, but in my opinion, that would be something that Robert was just discussing.
If we were here with this, when would be the first date we start collecting the additional tax?
I believe the chart is such that it has, once the governor assigns the bill into law, then there's a notification process. And I think if, like, for instance, if it's adopted, let's say in May, or if at the latest, July, I believe, let's just use July, then the collection could begin in September. But now, a lot of local bills get signed into law much earlier than the July dates. Most of them get signed into law in May. So if it were started in May, I believe you could begin the collection in July.
And I think we talked about the possibility of the pool being something we could get, or is...
It's front and center. It says recreational facilities. I don't think there's any ambiguity whatsoever with respect to the pool.
And we list, when we list these projects, David, do we have to list certain amount of money for this one or this one, or we just list them generally?
Well, remember, this is a collection, so you won't have an idea exactly how much is a budgeted item, so you will just have a budget that you will address, but it'll be covered in your yearly budget. For instance, this year, you would have budgeted this item into, so this would be unbudgeted of revenue at this point in time. Of course, I would expect y'all to amend the budget once you do adopt it and the governor has in fact signed it into law. And then from there, you know, it's just like any other, any other source of revenue, the revenue minus the expenses and whatever's left over would be... Now, it wouldn't go into the general fund. I would caution the board on this. This would be what I would term restricted funds, okay? So it would have to be spent in accordance with this tourism product development requirement.
The numbers, non-restricted?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm talking, yes. The unrestricted, yes, the unrestricted could be spent in any manner. Did you hear that, Charlie?
Yes, I did.
Charlie, you know better hearing than I did. I think I may need to go here and see a hearing doctor.
I think the key to it is to be on a landline ready to set up.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Wow, maybe you need to use it on the park.
Yeah, after, I mean, you know, again, initially, you know, this, each year, you, I wish Sandy were here, but I would...
I can look up, I mean, I can look it up. Do y'all get to spit out some numbers?
Yeah, no. Jennifer is going to approach the podium, Charlie, let me transfer the phone.
I don't have the sheet that I had from that meeting. It's okay. Thank you. Again, the chamber, we are just a point of information on this subject. But the numbers for 2021, when we projected what it would have been if we were at 8%, the county received about $550,000. And if we had the 8% with different allocations, the chamber currently receiving 70%, but going down to more like 45%, the county would be... seventy percent, but going down to more like forty-five percent, the county would be making about a hundred thousand dollars more per month than it did. So it would have gone from about five hundred and fifty thousand into the county to one point six million into the county, of which about five hundred thousand is the restricted. So that's what you would have to earmark for the swimming pool or whatever. So yeah, that was what the numbers were, was about a hundred thousand.
The five hundred thousand would be the TPD?
Yes.
Wow, that's a considerable amount of money.
Yeah, it is. And the Chamber would go from currently at seventy percent of five percent, which has been around for a very long time, but we have proposed going down to near the minimum in the future because the honest truth is it wouldn't really affect our bottom line because three point five pennies of five percent versus three point five pennies of eight percent is still three point five pennies. So that's why we don't really have skin in the game, but information wise, I'm here. Good evening.
So my advice at this point in time would be armed with this literature is to digest it, maybe consult with me if you have any questions by email. And I know this probably won't be well received, but consider a special call maybe in the first week of February. I'm getting scrawled that by Ed One and Charlie.
Why don't we go ahead and, why don't we go ahead today? What do we think we know a week from now that we don't know that?
Your project?
If we say the pool and that, that's all the project.
Well, if we say pool and possible signage, I mean, does it, if you don't, I had seen another county, if they chose, they put it on their list and then they chose not to do it for whatever reason, they weren't pen focused.
Bound by it, that's absolutely true. You're not, you're not bound by it, but you do at least need to identify. So if you want to be overly inclusive, that's fine.
I'd love to include park, you know, or parks or park, say pool and pool parks signage.
Yeah, my recommendation is to adopt them by those sub paragraphs. For instance, if you wish to move forward on the wayfinding, wayfinding signage, I would recommend you adopt that J. And then if you wish to do the pool, which is under the recreational facilities, you do the O. And that, what I would do is just capture, I would capture them that way, with that specific language, parks, trails, and other recreational facilities.
Okay, great, I'm good with that.
Are there any others that you would wish to consider in there?
We're only talking about for the six month period or whatever.
Yes.
Six years or so.
Yes.
I'm good with those two because we are only talking, then we can sort of see if this passes, if we go forward with it then.
Charlie, do you have any input?
Now, there's several things that I'm curious about, but nothing that I would want to say right now, we need to include. But now, we're not, we're not deciding right this minute, are we?
As far as specific project?
I think Hubert, I think Hubert is thinking, why don't we go ahead and?
Adopt the resolution.
I'd say, okay.
Today.
Yeah.
And I'm in agreement with it.
And so far, we're looking at signage and recreation, did I miss anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Would we want to include our coffeepot or something in this?
I don't think it would qualify, Charlie, because it specifies that, let me.
Oh, yeah, that's right, resort development.
Yes, I think it's more along the lines of the Blairsville.
Yeah. I don't have anything else.
We're not trying, we're trying to make a budget item, we're not careful. The pool to take care of everything, going to include wayfinding signs, fine, but I don't, that means we're going ahead and, of course, we don't have to follow that. We're not really making a budget decision. Like, we include wayfinding, we don't have to find it later, okay?
Right.
I'm not against wayfinding.
Yeah, that I know should be, just in cases.
I'm good with that, just the way y'all said it.
There's not a motion yet, but I think forty-five percent for the Chamber would be appropriate.
That was great.
That would reduce the non-restricted, right, David?
Okay, looking at that other chart, y'all were considering increasing from forty-three point seven five percent to forty-five percent. I believe that that one and a quarter percent can actually come from the eighteen point seven five percent.
Okay.
Because it says it may be used for tourism or TPD, otherwise used for TCT. I'll clarify that, but I think you're safe in increasing that to forty-five percent and reducing the other one by one and a quarter percent.
Are we ready for a motion? I think so, I'll make one. We can still discuss that. I make a motion, we move the hotel motel packs to eight percent, the forty-five percent for the Chamber. And in our resolution, we include the pool and wayfinding signage.
Which is parks, trails, and recreation facilities. Okay. Is that all there is in that motion? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and second that motion.
And submit the request to Speaker Ralston.
And submit the request to Speaker Ralston.
Okay, I second it with those adjustments. So Charlie, there's a first and a, I mean, there's a motion and a second. I guess you can say all in favor or any discussion, Charlie?
No, for me.
Okay. So you have, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Chief Kaufman, are you ready to present now or no? Yes?
We have our billing representative here.
Okay.
Stay in order, it's fine.
Okay. No, that's okay, we can go ahead and go to item number one, which is actually in order.
Okay.
Now. Discussion of possible action of adoption of a rate increase for ambulance fees.
So for this portion, we're going to refer to MedCor who is Mr. Walters, with the owner of the company that's doing our billing, and he's going to address some of the billing changes that are suggested from his company.
Great, thank you. Hello, I'm Michael Waters. I actually run MedCor BLS billing, we do the county's billing. After reviewing your rates on your ambulance services, I did suggest that the rates increase slightly. And the reason I say that, according to your rates now, a lot of your private insurance companies are actually paying more out than what y'all are charging. So in essence, for private insurance, you're actually leaving money on the table that private insurances would pay if your rates were higher. I did kind of look at the general area from Union County all the way down through Pickens County, just kind of giving an average. Did not want y'all to hide, but by all means, you don't want to be the lowest either. So the rate suggestions that I came up with are, but you count in the middle where you're not high, you're not low, you're just kind of the average of that. Do y'all have a copy of those suggestions? Okay. This is your current. Currently, on your BLS non-emergency rates, y'all are at four hundred dollars. My suggestion would be five ninety-five. That is about a forty-eight percent increase, just on the non-emergency basic life support call. The BLS emergency is currently five hundred dollars, my suggestion would be six forty-five, which is about a twenty-nine percent increase. The ALS non-emergency, you're currently at six hundred dollars, my suggestion is six ninety-five, which is somewhere in fifteen percent. Your ALS emergency is currently at seven hundred, my suggestion would be seven forty-five, which would be about a six percent increase. Your ALS two, you're currently at eight hundred, my suggestion would be eight ninety-five, about eleven percent. And your mileage is at twelve, and I would suggest up to about thirteen, which is about an eight percent increase or a dollar. The SCT is pretty in line, although you will have very few of those. And I think y'all have a treatment no transport rate that is currently three fifty, which should be fine on that. If you have a.
So the treatment no transport, we're currently not billing for that.
That's what I was going to ask, okay?
And that was one thing I wanted to implement, that is, like Michael was saying, that's money left on the table that these insurance companies will pay out, that we're spending money for supplies and stuff that we use that we're not able to bill for.
At the correct time, some of your insurances will not pay this treatment no transport. However, like Georgia Medicaid, they will pay a treatment no transport, some of your Blue Cross insurances, which is very prominent, you know, in the area, they will pay for a treatment no transport. So that would help recoup some of the cost of fuel to supplies and anything else that you use on those cars that normally would not get charged for.
What are you recommending for that rate?
The three fifty is actually about in line. Medicaid, of course, they're considerably lower. Medicaid rates are usually around a hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Blue Cross Blue Shield will pay to a maximum of four fifty. So that's kind of landing at a mid-range there.
Who they don't collect, if they, we're not going to build some money that is not covered by insurance. So if insurance don't cover it, they won't actually see the bill for those, for the treatment no transports. Which is currently how it exists now.
And these, the suggested prices keep us in line with, I mean, where does it, if we're in the medium range now, does this put us?
Currently, y'all are.
Low?
One of the lowest.
Okay, okay.
Around.
Okay.
These rate increases actually put you in the midline.
Okay.
With everyone.
Okay.
It'd be good if we had a copy of that ahead of time next time, what you're proposing rate wise.
I thought it was sent ahead when I, when I passed.
Okay, is this one that we needed? First Charlie. Charlie, do you have any say? Do you have any comments?
Well, it all sounded pretty reasonable. And I think the idea for the sort of middle is where we need to be.
Okay. So Chief, you need us to vote on accepting? Do you have any more comments or anything about this?
I would just say the cost of us doing business has gone up, our supplies to our vendor, IVs, glue gun, stuff that we've used for treatment and transport as well. That stuff has gone up incrementally quite a bit. The cost of fuel, just running a truck to a house and then getting a refusal and sending the truck back to the station, the truck's out of zone, the truck's, you know, committed to a patient and there's no recovery of funds. So if there are funds available to help offset that, you know, I think the treatment of transport is a very good alternative. And I think these, if these increases are in line in the median range, I would definitely pass it to accept this and moving forward, just to help offset the increased costs that, you know, we're putting out monthly for supplies.
Y'all have a copy I have to look at. I hear what you're saying, I'll send you a piece of paper to, for voting or something.
Sure. I wrote them, but honestly, I'm not familiar with all the letters meant for each.
The BLS is listed, that is basic life support. And the ALS is the advanced life support, food recovery, care medic, and all of them.
It says it on here. Are you good with me taking a picture of this?
Yes.
First one, it's online. Yeah, oh, sorry. And is this something, Chief, that you need now to move ahead so it's not, if we wanted to?
I mean, the sooner the better, the more money, because right now, with the pandemic, we are, our call volume is out the roof, so the more, and we're using more supplies.
Okay.
So this would help, just immediately help start offsetting these costs.
Okay. Then I will make a motion that we adopt this rate increase for ambulance fees.
Hold on a second.
I think Hubert did it, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now we have discussion of possible action of recipient, sub-recipient agreement for the public assistance program.
I'll be covering that, I guess, for, for emergency management, public safety.
Okay.
And my conversation with him this morning in our discussion, in March of 2021, we had a significant storm that came through for a period from March twenty-fifth ending in March twenty-sixth. We had trees down, power lines, and touched down in tornadoes. Actually had some swift water rescues where people were actually rescued out of vehicles that were stranded in water. This recipient, sub-recipient agreement is an agreement between the state and the county, with the state being the recipient and Gilmore County being the sub-recipient. What this agreement does is it develops a cost share. So the federal government would have a 75% award for the cost share to cover. The county would get 15% and the state would cover 10%. And at this point, they haven't determined the actual dollars that are going to come out as a result of this storm. But by signing this agreement, it's an agreement between the county and the state. And that's my understanding, and that's what needs to be done today is to have this signed so they can start getting the funding and distribution out.
Is there something that we can look at, David?
Yes, y'all have historically signed these types of agreements. And if it's the model of what's been presented before.
I'm making a motion, we authorize the chairman to sign the recipient, sub-recipient agreement.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, discussion and possible action of final local maintenance improvement grant road selection.
Good morning, commissioners. You have in front of you a number of presentations. And Charlie, Edwina has your copy, and we can email them to you if you would like. We are under somewhat of a timeline in that the 2022 L-MIC road list has to be presented to GDOT by February the first. The first sheet that you have here is the list of roads that we have on the road list that has been adopted by the Board of Commissioners. And then the other sheets that are attached to that, the contractor paving and striping, we are not under a timeline there. So what I'd love to do today is just deal with the local maintenance list. And let me give you an indication of the criteria that we try to use in making a recommendation. As you can see from the list, there is a combination of roads that have been paved with surface treatment and roads that have been paved with asphalt, roads that have been paved, that are un paved, excuse me, that are gravel roads. And what we try to do is we try to keep a mix and not overly do one or the other. On the recommendation that we're making to you, and Charlie, I understand that you worked with Ryan and Ronnie on a tentative list earlier that has been changed somewhat because undeniable to probably Ryan or Ronnie, there were commitments that were made in previous years, L-MIC funding, that because there was not enough money, we were not able to do. The two roads that, or roads that were committed were Old Parker Place Road and Old Parker Terrace. Those two roads were actually on the previous L-MIC list and we ran out of money. In addition to that, Henry Evans Road. And these three roads are all gravel roads. And commitments were made to them, so we have put them as one, two, and three on 2022. The additional roads that are on 22 is Samuel Road, Turnip Town Road, a section of Turnip Town Road beyond the Walden Mountain Gates. And then you have the list of cost breakdown or estimated cost for those roads. This sheet is the sheet that shows you the cost breakdown for Old Parker Place Road, Old Parker Terrace, that section of Turnip Town Road, Henry Evans Road, Samuel Road, and River Lane. At that point, we ran out of money, keeping $17,000 for what we term as wet weather stone. And this is stone that we stockpiled at the road department during the winter time months to handle a variety of roads for grading and gravel when we can't get to the quarry. So that is our recommendation to you, trying to commit, keep commitments that were made in previous years and also to keep from losing sections of road that were on the list that if we don't resurface, we'll lose those roads. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And all we're dealing with today is the L-MIC roads or local maintenance and improvement grant roads that we would submit, we had to submit them by February the first in order to be eligible for the funding. The total project for 22 would be $944,221, of which 70% of that is $726,328, with a county match of 30%, $217,897.87. And to point out to you, in the past, we have had no difficulty in meeting the county match of 30% because we do it with force account services. So there is no actual cash outlay other than the regular road department line item budget.
I have a question about, not to get into exactly what this, the triple service, or any of, is any of the L-MIC money used on paving?
You're talking about hot mix paving? No.
Okay.
What we, what we do with the contractor hot mix paving now is we use capital outlay, and I think we have a million and a half dollars for that this year. And we will do just like we did last year, and that is we will write specifications and we will put the project out for bid. This is totally surface treatment, Carlene, and that would either, it is double surface treatment for an existing surface treated road and triple surface treatment for a gravel road.
Gotcha, okay. And all done in-house?
All that is done in-house, that is correct.
Okay.
I would not anticipate that we would start on these roads until we have finished our 21. We're still working on 2021, Pleasant Valley Road and some others. And as you all know, I think during my medical absence, we do not have the chips spreader. And we're expected to receive that chips spreader in March. So we would not anticipate starting on these roads probably until May or something like that, maybe April.
I'll have a problem with this. In February, we're going to do the road paving list, right?
I guess, and we already have started, but we presented to you at your last regular meeting here, and this is in your packet. We already have started with a list of roads that would be hot mix contracted roads. And of course, we can add to that until the money runs out. These are our roads right now that we feel like that need attention. But the Board of Commissioners may have different ideas. The one that we are concentrating on today is the L-MIC, the 2022 L-MIC list.
Okay. Did you get this?
There you go.
Charlie, do you have any questions for Jim? And you're good, you see this list and you're good with, well, I missed it. Maybe you've seen this document as well. Charlie has this, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the list from the road department for our local maintenance improvement grant selection for 2022.
Yes, ma'am.
So, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, Jim. Moving on to discussion and possible action of pool design approval. Charlie, I hate for you to talk a lot, but you want to?
There's several changes to our initial design. And you know, we've been working with a number of people trying to figure out why nobody wanted to bid on the construction, trying to get new engineers and so forth. One of the things is apparently the initial design, although very impressive, would be pretty complicated to build it as opposed to your typical just straight over rectangular pool that most everybody else has. The latest proposal that we have is one that seems to be able to make some progress with pool builders. It's a, for lack of a better word, we'll call it a competition pool. It'll be rectangular in nature. It'll be eight lanes wide. And then there would be a separate waiting pool. The waiting pool would have water features, salt trees, mushrooms, and things like that. The main pool, the really big decision on that is the diving well. Without, without exception, everybody we've talked to has said, bad idea. Shouldn't even diving well. The latest folks that we've talked with communicated that they could play additional recreational features in place of the diving wells, such things as boy basketballs, which I have no idea what it is, but it sounds like people might like it. It will still be zero entry. The only thing is no diving well. The ultimate for the diving well, if we do want to go there, if we're insisting on going there, will be it costs an initial order of a million dollars. And liability insurance would become very difficult. So our current recommendation to put forth to y'all is for a standard rectangular eight lane pool with recreational features, but no diving well. And a separate waiting pool with water features associated with that. And that is something that we feel that we can get engineering on spec for bid and potentially have under construction in the maybe may or two time length. So that is what I would present. I have a picture of photographs that I took from cell phone of the of a picture that I have that was too big to, for me to email or anything. That shows exactly what I'm talking about with the exception that that depicted a five lane pool or six lane, I forget. We had to increase that out to eight lanes. So with that exception of the difference in size, that would be what we're looking at. And I'd like to be able to go forward with that because we really need to get this done.
Well, I, I'm sorry to make you talk so much. Okay, you don't have to talk anymore for a minute. I remember initially when I was talking to other pool recreation department directors, I had a long conversation with the Cherokee County Recreation or Aquatic Director. And she was shocked that we were talking about having a diving well because they were told they couldn't do that and it was. Also, they talked about a square footage. I remember her going into detail of how many bodies using square feet of the pool. And I think our pool designer, we had a little bit of discussion about that in the past. And then it just wasn't financially smart to have this diving well that cost them the extra liability. But they too, if I remember correctly, had a hard time finding someone that would, that would build it. And then the county or the area just decided to not do that and to add on additional, like you're talking about. I don't know if the basketball, water basketball that you're talking about would be in the area or the dimensions of the competition pool or not. But if you've seen the Cherokee Aquatic Center, I mean, it's huge and they extended it out. But most of it, there is not a diving well. is not a diving well per se in that. It's a competition area, then they have several other sections that you, they have all kinds of recreation and classes and all kinds of things at that facility, and it's really a, a beautiful facility. And to make note, they do not ever break even. It is still costs the community every year to use that even though they have that great facility and charge membership and that kind of thing. So it certainly is a, something that we offer to the community on that. One question I have, I definitely, if approving this design, would want the eight lanes and them to be the same width as we had discussed before, and I don't see any dimensions really written down on the width of the lane, but that would be something that I would want to definitely make sure that they, I have a folder here that I'm looking at, but I can email to the other commissioners just the, the width of each lane.
Seven point six.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember the exact width that I figured back in my head, but what I can tell you is the competition's standard width.
Well, the good part is we have help here to show us.
Seven point six.
Sorry, what was that?
Oh, I haven't seen this.
Yes, I've been in minutes of reading.
Oh, okay. That's your, the meeting that you had with the pool company? Okay, okay, seven feet, six inches, okay. Okay. If you have any comment, while I dig through this, because I know that was a big deal that they needed passing on each side, you know, swimmers wanted to be able to pass each other, so I don't remember if that's, no, I know this is not yours. I'm, I'm just trying to find out where my notes were about the lane width. I know you'll do the length the same, but the lane width so that we can have swimmers passing each other.
Seven point six, what we can do with that.
Okay, well, let me see if that's what our, our swim team and what's discussed. Any questions?
I don't quite understand, Charlie, why you say we had to go to eight lanes from six. I don't understand that. What, what's...
We don't have to go from eight to six. We, we had started out with a, it's somewhere along the lines, we had gotten reduced by the pool folks to six. So we would just put you back to where we began.
And, and it was, sorry, I know why we, they wanted eight was the swim team and state competitions to be eight.
Correct.
But in talking with Kevin, he indicated we don't have a lodging facilities here to accommodate state competition. Just a thought.
That's what I'm saying, we don't have what?
Lodging accommodations to host state meet.
Well, this is one of those things where if we get the lodging accommodations later, we're not going to be able to go back and add two lanes. We just have to decide if we want to be able to, to host this in the future or not. And I understand, okay, whatever, I just want to get this thing built.
I'm concerned too about no diving well. Other counties in the area have diving wells. There may be some liability issue, but I don't think the engineer would be the one to speak to those. If you go with six lanes and a diving well, you're not, eight, you're not talking about two hundred and fifty thousand because you'd reduce the cost of those extra two lanes that could be applied to the well. To me, I, I use it pretty blunt, and that's not good. But we need a community pool. Yes, we need to accommodate swim team, of course, but this is a community pool first and foremost. I think you'll find diving is very popular. Kids are lined up to dive. I don't know how much activity you have in the lap pools with just kids. Those are just thoughts I have.
What other county pools have diving wells? Do you know?
Calhoun has one, City of Calhoun. There'd be two or three other.
There's several counties around that do in fact have diving boards. I believe Fannin has one, Dawson County has one. The City of Calhoun just recently built their aquatic center, and I believe they've actually got multiple diving boards in their facility is because they've been encouraged to dive. So it's not something that's not uncommon. And again, the, the only person that spoke as to the liability cost has been the engineer, and there hasn't actually been a, a figure presented to y'all with respect to what is the difference. But I'll, I'll call your attention back to that TPD under the hotel motel lodging tax. Under the tourism product development, there's a specific sentence in there that says that such expenditures may include capital cost and operating expenses. So any increase in the liability cost could be funded through that TPD.
I'm, I'm fine with staying with the diving well, I just make a decision on it.
I, 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 I also, I am, I would like to see eight lanes because I do think if there are people swimming laps, then again, we're, we're losing square footage. Even if someone's, you've got two lap lanes to swim or something, we're losing square footage of that recreation area. And also, this, is this the, is this the, what is that slide? Do you know? Do you know if this is the slide on your paper? So the slide will still be in the pool?
Slide is on its separate...
Yes, the slide will still be there.
It's on its separate.
It says vortex slide. Okay, so, so, and it will still just come into one of the lanes?
Yes.
Okay.
And of course, those lanes will only be lanes once they're, when they're cordoned off for some sort of, event, otherwise it'll just be one open pool for recreation.
May I make a suggestion? The engineers presented the conceptual plan to y'all, and that did, that did include the diving well, so it can be designed. There's not an issue as being able to be constructed. Why not ask the engineer to continue with that design with six lanes and the diving well, and then also do a design of eight lanes in the diving well? Because you, earlier today, you've been, you, you have increased that hotel motel lodging tax such that you will have an additional five hundred thousand dollars roughly, as Jennifer discussed, that is unaccounted for in unplanned revenue. So if the diving well was estimated to add two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the cost as it was conceptually designed, I don't think adding those two more lanes would probably add more than that if you did a multiple two. So you're still within, I would think within your, not necessarily your original estimated budget, but with the additional source of funds, you would have the funds to pay for the pool. That would be my recommendation, and, and that would satisfy everyone, I do believe. And I think y'all have indicated the consideration of involving the public, but if you, if you present a pool that satisfies everyone, I don't know that the public has to participate in a town hall, you know what I'm saying?
Did you hear that, Charlie?
Yeah, and the other recommendation I have is in asking engineers to do two separate designs, six lane, eight lane. I would rather we decide what we want to do and just say, okay, here it is, design it for us. For the sake of one thing less confusion, it's like we have all these options and we're not, we haven't been able to narrow ourselves down to exactly what. So what I would suggest is if we go back and we say we want the diving well, we want eight lanes diving well, go ahead and design it, give us specs that we need to get this lane bid under construction, and let's just do it.
I'm good with the eight lanes, with having them bid, eight lanes and the diving well, or having at least the engineer do the specs for that.
Yeah, I didn't get, I was like, Charlie, when I did the fear, eight lanes and diving well, so.
So, go ahead, go ahead, Hubert, if you want to say anything.
Plus of a sudden, to design both ways, you could bid it both ways. If you bid it eight lanes and a diving well, and it just is out of our reach, then we're back to square one. Of course, I have a better idea once you design it as to what the estimate cost is. I'm finding we'll go eight in the diving well and we'll see what happens.
I can tell you that just off the top of their head, four eight lanes, so diving well, they felt that we would probably be looking at about one point five feet. Now, there's, there's things on top of that. There's going to be a lot of ground crap that's going to have to be done there, and it's going to be very expensive because we're going to have to, we're going to have to stabilize the bottom of that pool such that it can support the weight of a new pool for several decades to come. So we've got one point five foot pool. I think we're probably looking at putting two feet in total. But this is just off the top of their head, and it's not that far off from what we have available, so, you know, if y'all, if y'all feel okay with proceeding with eight lanes and a diving well, you know, maybe we can, can get this thing done, particularly with the potential for the additional revenue from hooking up a new one.
Okay, I make that in the form of a motion that we approve this pool design with the eight lanes and diving well. Approve this pool design with the eight lanes and the diving well.
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any need for executive session?
No, not for me.
No? Nope, okay. Then Hubert?
Charlie, I hope you get some rest after this long session.
Thank you.
I do make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.